I will call this regularly scheduled meeting of Christiansburg Town Council to order and as we do, we're going to take a moment of reflection so that we can share thoughts and individuals and things that may be on our mind tonight, so let's take a moment of reflection. Thank you. Please would you rise for the, oops, your next one? Please, please. I want to ask State Hubbard if he will please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains and one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the amended, uh, to the agenda? Hearing none, saying none, we'll move on to public hearings. Is there any, I don't think we have any scheduled. Very good. The consent agenda consists of five items. It's the approval of council minutes of July the 24th, resolution affirming support of the New River Valley Water Authority projects and bond financing by the board, resolution in recognition of finance office manager Sherri Hunter, construction contract award to King General Contractors for the arms metal grainings improvements, construction contract award to H.T. Bowen for portion, district repair and reconstruction project.
I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda, if you could.
Second, a motion on second, Madam Court.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Councilman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Shaw?
Aye. Aye.
That's fine, uh, sit down, thank you. This next session is citizens' comments where if you are a citizen and would like to bring something to our attention, we ask that you come forward to the microphone, state your name and address, make your comments directly to the chair and the council, and you have three minutes. Is there anyone here that would like to address council?
First of all, speaking to Senator Green, I have been watching the last town council video online. I see that you're at it again with zoning, you know, handling the problems, make nothing be a problem. Well, I'm here for a problem, but it is a problem. I have a meth lab, formal meth lab, across the street from my house. It's been deemed unsafe for human habitation since March 9th, 2016. That is a danger to the community. And ironically enough, the person who owns that house lives at 4390 Road Up here, right in the heart of the people, different people, who are here complaining about not wanting to have that without to help people not rebuild. I'd like to see maybe you can figure out something that says that if there's a meth lab, it has to be cleaned up at a certain period of time, not two and a half years? And there are dangerous chemicals involved in manufacturing that, and there are small children living across the street in that house.
Thank you. We'll lose that information, we would be glad to, uh, you turn that over to the department authorities. Anyone else? Hearing none, we will close the citizens' comments.
Oh, I didn't, I came to wait so I could even realize that it was citizens' comments.
Okay, three minutes.
Okay.
Name, address, and all that good stuff.
Hi, I'm Linda Wordsburger. I live at 311 East Bain Street at the Oaks. Um, I was at the high school the other day and I saw that the students that have parking places there are painting murals on their parking places, great art. It would be really nice if we had some art downtown, and I think we could use our high school kids to do this. Maybe have a contest, they can use some parking places, because if, um, people said, well, if I get the, owners of the buildings to allow murals, but why do they have to be our buildings? They got a box. And I went to town somewhere, the Crosswalk for Murals. Um, I've seen park benches have been painted and really vibrant, and it gives a really great vibe to the downtown and gives people a reason to come downtown. And hopefully we can do some things like that in our downtown.
That's what we have a little bit for the mayor about three months ago.
And I talked to him, the least possible week.
We know, we know. Thank you, Linda. Anyone else to address council? Hearing none, I will close the comments section. We have some introductions and presentations tonight. I'm going to ask Vice Mayor Brad Stipes if he would assist me in this first presentation.
Brad, go watch through the mic.
Yep.
Councilwoman Sax lent me her readers this evening, so I appreciate that. Got mine. Ms. Odell? You can stand right here, we didn't practice anything yet.
We're okay, man, Brian's new together.
No, I'm ready. So, we, we try to do a very good job, or we try to do a good job here in Christiansburg of recognizing standout performances in many different areas. We recognize a lot of our sports teams and we have a lot to be proud about. But a few weeks ago, in News Messenger, I don't know if it was Mr. Gordon, but there's an outstanding article about you, Ms. Odell, and winning the Presidential Award for Excellence in Science and Mathematics. And we have a presentation to make, but what I wanted to say to our audience is that STEM is very important, science tech, uh, science, technology, engineering, and math. And Ms. Odell's background, which we won't get into, but it is sort of interesting, having been in childcare for 15 years, and she came back and got an advanced degree and is a, is one of only 111 recipients nationwide of this Presidential Award. So she is inspiring young men and young women in areas of math at our middle school. And this is, this is the point in people's, young people's lives when they're deciding what they can do and what they, what they're able to do. And we have an outstanding school system, we have outstanding teachers, which you, Ms. Odell, are seeing are special. And we appreciate your accomplishments and your investing in our, in our younger folks and inspiring the folks that would be our leaders in technology, engineering, and math. So with that being said, I appreciate the opportunity and, uh, and the town council, on behalf of the town council, we appreciate you.
I will, I will get Brad for you and, and I will come right over here and kind of deface the audience, and I will read this, uh, this certificate. The certificate hereby recognizes Kathleen Odell for receiving the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. This is the highest award the U.S. government can bestow upon kindergarten to 12th grade math and science teachers. In your own, you are one of only two recipients in Virginia. Thank you for positively representing our town, working to make our, a difference in our community and influencing and educating the children of Denver County. This conveyed this 14th Day of Office 2018. Get them. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good work. Yes. These excuses. I'm married to the whole.
Next presentation is Director of Parks and Recreation Brad Everly to present on Parks and Recreation operations.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. I'm just going to talk a little bit about our department and a lot of the great things that we have going on and what we've been up to this past year. So we'll go through a divisional breakdown of the department and some of the facilities that we manage and maintain, our new Rome NRV bike share, a few of the grants that we were awarded this year, Jill's Buddy Camp, which just completed its fourth year, and some other programs and events that we have done this past year. So our full-time staff, we have 17 full-time staff members, including myself. We have divisions that are broken down into community programs, outdoor sports facilities in parks, senior and special populations, adult athletic programs, youth athletic programs, as well as recreation center supervisors, and then we have park maintenance and crew leaders as well as building maintenance folks. Those last five are some of the most important in our staff. As I just mentioned, we've, we've got the administration, community programs, preschool, youth, adults, special interests. We also do a lot of different health screenings and trips and cooking classes, special events, Fourth of July Celebration, Christmas Parade, and a variety of those types of events. At the Recreation Center, we also host a lot of programs along with tournaments and different types of rentals of the facility, going into multipurpose rooms, classrooms, as well as the court facilities. So program wise, this past year, we had a total of 575 programs. We had 28,066 participants in those programs for an attendance level of 68,406. That does not include attendance of youth athletic events as well as adult athletic events. So it's definitely been busy this year, and we have grown in participation rates, and we're happy to do that. Special events wise, we completed 69 different special events going anywhere from youth athletic camps to the Fourth of July Celebration, Christmas Parades, and a variety of different things along those lines. As far as the special events go, we had over 7,000 folks join us for, as participants of those special events. So some of the facilities that we manage and maintain, parks throughout our town, Circle Park, which is on Ella Drive, Depot Park, which is on, on Depot Street, many of you understand that Depot Park just went through a stream restoration project, and, uh, so we thank our great engineering staff for heading that up and leading that for us. It's really provided a, a really great aesthetic value to the environment, but also to the view of your eyes. Downtown Park on College Street, recently, uh, we dedicated that park to our fallen officers here in the town of Christiansburg. We had a great ceremony back in May to, to recognize those men. Uh, we also have a park on Summer Ridge Park Road, Wall Street Park. The newest park that we have is John Lindley Park, which was put into play a couple of years ago due to being able to gain a grant or basically a sweepstakes of an $80,000 playground set. So we were glad to have that. And then we also have Wayside Park, which is the park going down Christiansburg Mountain that's primarily more for stopping to grab a bite to eat with some picnic tables and those types of things. Uh, here's a picture of our downtown park, as I mentioned, dedicated to our fallen officers. We have two monuments recognizing Officer Hilton, Officer Griffith, as well as having the sign put into place there. So facilities managed and maintained, the Recreation Center. Many of you know, some of you may not, the Recreation Center just celebrated its 20th anniversary, 20th birthday, however you want to call it, this past November. Had a great celebration, had a number of folks that came and, uh, partook in, in some of the events that we had for that. Uh, the Recreation Center has four full-size courts, an eighth mile walking track, along with multipurpose and classrooms. We do have a senior section of the Recreation Center that stays occupied majority of the days along with two rapid ball courts, a weight room, a cardio room. We also have a study lounge and internet cafe, and a few years back, we went to LED lighting in the gymnasium area, and now we are currently moving forward with LED lighting in, in the other parts of the facility as well. The one nice thing also by the Recreation Center, the large majority of the staff of the Parks and Recreation Department is housed under one roof there at the Rec Center. So that's very helpful for us as we take care of all the different programs that we've got. So community wise, reaching our community, we had, uh, this past year, we had 6,173 active memberships. We had over 108,000 membership scans, and that's basically just folks that are coming in to walk, to lift weights, uh, to, to run on the treadmill. That does not include our program numbers or our youth or adult athletic items or even our tournament rentals. Uh, we have day passes of over 1,200, and then the indoor rentals, which basically was youth basketball as well as some youth volleyball and our gymnastics week, which was, this was our first year doing that, was over 27,000 folks in, in attendance for those. Uh, other facilities managed to maintain, the Harprider Sports Complex, which is just the side of the Christiansburg Middle School. This is probably the jewel of our area, and it, it is used pretty much almost every weekend for, for tournaments and those types of things from April through October. But the other great part about it is, is we use it for our own leagues, for our own residents, for youth and adult sports. Harprider was open in 2006. As I mentioned before, we've got three lighted fields. We do have a walking track that is, uh, that is used heavily out there, it's four tenths of a mile. There are also tennis courts and basketball courts that are located beside the Harprider. They are under the direction of the, of the Montgomery County Public Schools, but a lot of our folks do use those from a recreational aspect. We also have two playgrounds. Currently, it is the home, uh, home field of Christiansburg High School, Christiansburg Middle School softball. That is soon to be changing as they are building a new field at the high school where they will be called that home. We're still working with Christiansburg Middle School just due to the close proximity of the school and our facility. They could possibly still use our facility as well. Uh, we do host a, a lot of local, state, and national events. We've sort of been known, honestly, on, on the national level as a great place to come play, and, uh, and we really value that, and a lot of that has to do with just the hospitality that's here within our area as well as taking care of good fields and running good programs. This is one of our previous World Series. As you can see, that's in the Recreation Center. All four fields or all four courts are filled with people. That's from teens and parents and such for that event. It definitely brings a lot of folks to our area when we're able to host events like that. So as far as the tournaments go, last year, we had 731 teams that played at the Harprider Sports Complex. Over 10,000 players participated. We had over 2,100 hotel rooms reserved. It is fair to mention, while we really pride ourselves on getting events in even during the inclement weather, we had some torrential downpours and we had, it has two rainouts that was major tournaments, and that cost us 110 teams into our area and probably close to 400 rooms, I would imagine. It was, uh, it was sort of a big hit for us, but we did everything we could, but sometimes the only thing I've learned in the athletic business is you can't control the weather, so you just go with it. Other facilities we manage and maintain is Kuanis Park. We have two covered picnic shelters, two lighted fields and one playground. We also use that for our youth and adult leagues as well as tournaments. At the current moment, this is the only location. We have picnic shelters, but we are fast improving that number. We are working with an Eagle Scout currently, Ty Quack, who's a Christiansburg High School student, and it's his Eagle Scout project. He is building a picnic shelter at the downtown park, the fallen officer dedication of the fallen officers park. And we actually have materials to build another picnic shelter at Depot Park as well. And, um, currently, through our bikeway-walkway sponsorship program, I have been in contact with Home Depot, and they have agreed to provide materials for us. And we hope to have a picnic shelter along the Huckleberry Trail behind their location as well. So, uh, we also have found a, a group that is willing to build it for us too. So, uh, it's very exciting to, to have some of those items within the town. Huckleberry Trail, as I mentioned there, the next phase that we have got will be going from the Food Lion area down through, uh, around the Christiansburg High School and down on Independence. We're definitely looking forward to that section taking hold. You know, the, the Huckleberry Trail, it's amazing, quite honestly, the use of the Huckleberry Trail. It doesn't matter the weather, I mean, there's people on the trail. And whether it's used for recreational items or for business or school items, just from a connectivity standpoint, it is a very highly used recreational asset that we have. And the folks who had the vision to, to bring the Huckleberry Trail here and fought for it, they did a good thing. With the Huckleberry Trail, as I mentioned before, we do have the bikeway-walkway sponsorship programs. Most recently, we have put in benches, picnic tables, as well as pet waste containers. And this past couple of weeks, we put in a water station that will be a water fountain for adults as well as pets, and that was sponsored through the Virginia Department of Health. So, uh, very excited about that program and what it is doing. And in return, from a sponsorship perspective, we were able to put the businesses and such out on there that they have donated to that cause. The next item is our bike share, Rome Bike Share. I've discussed this before here at, at our council meeting, but I wanted to bring it up because this has been such a great, uh, asset again to our community, and again, recreational as well as business and educational. And we have got a lot of folks that have rode the Huckleberry Trail the entire distance, whether it be to go to work, whether it be to go to school, whether it be folks from Blacksburg coming to the mall. There's a lot of different things that they have done. Currently, we have 75 bikes, seven-speed bikes. We are still waiting on the electronic assist bikes, and we'll address that this Thursday in one of our advisory meetings, but we hope to have that sometime towards the end of the fall. We, we've unveiled these for three weeks now. Currently, we have 379 active members, which I think is terrific. The calories burned from the, from the, uh, the use of the bike has been over 97,000. Actually, I just got an update on today, and it's over 101,000 calories. Miles that we have driven is over 2,500 miles, and as you can see, the carbon reduction there, over 2,157 pounds of carbon reduction. Currently, we have, have hubs and stations at the Christiansburg Recreation Center as well as the New River Valley Mall. I see Joseph Coon in the, in the crowd, and General Manager of the New River Valley Mall. And, uh, it was a great partnership to be able to place that bike up there. And the reports that I got back today, the Recreation Center area actually is in the, uh, the top four of hubs that have been used since it began, so that was exciting for us. Grants that we've been awarded this year, and it's fair to mention that with the bike share, there was a grant that was awarded. We have a committee, uh, an advisory committee, and, uh, we did receive a grant for over $200,000 for the capital products of the bike share, so that was a great win for us and our community. Uh, other grants that we were awarded this year is, uh, we received 20 dispensers through the Virginia Department of Health in Comprehensive Cancer Control for sunscreen dispensers. Uh, we just recently got those in, so those will start popping up at our parks as well as on the Huckleberry Trail. And we are looking at talking to a couple of different dermatologists about, um, keeping the sunscreen updated and those types of things in those dispensers, so that's a really exciting thing. To the best of my knowledge, we are the only department in this area that has taken advantage of that grant, so we're excited about that. Uh, another grant, which has been a large grant that, that we've been a part of, is the VRPS statewide initiative with Game Time Play Corps and Cunningham Recreation. This grant is for an inclusive playground along with a challenge course. As you see, the grant is worth $226,000. It's a matching grant of materials. This playground will be considered a national demonstration site once it is developed, so we are very excited about that. And the, uh, the inclusive playground, it's something that's not around anywhere, so this is a, this is another asset to Christiansburg and the New River Valley. And then the final grant that I want to talk about, just found out this past Friday that we were awarded this. This is a National Fitness Court Grant, and it is for 2019. Uh, this grant will provide $30,000 towards the building of a outdoor fitness court. We do have a particular location that we are looking at with this, and it could be along the Huckleberry Trail. And, uh, so we're very excited about this with the selection of this grant and being awarded this. It also names us a NFC Healthy City for 2019 as well. Jill's Buddy Camp, I've talked about Jill's Buddy Camp a number of times. This is something that's near and dear to me and close to my heart. This camp, oops. There we go. Sorry about that. This camp is a partnership between the town of Christiansburg Parks and Recreation Department and the Montgomery County Public Schools. What we do is we pair teenage buddies with children from preschool to second grade with disabilities. We work on a lot of different things through this camp. It's a two-week camp. We work on music, art, reading, physical activity, a lot of different things that help not only the campers but also the buddies and administrators as well. We go on field trips each day, somewhere new, somewhere exciting. This also serves in many cases for some students as an ESY from Montgomery County Public Schools. To the best of our knowledge, this is the first camp of this nature here in Virginia that utilizes the partnership between the school system and the recreation department. In many cases, you see where school systems take care of these types of camps. Actually, Salem has had one for a long time. Dr. Tommy Barber implemented it there. We are the first that, that we're aware of that also has something to do with the Recreation Department and schools working together. It's, it's just a really good thing to be able to, to double our resources. Uh, the other unique part about this is, is I was selected to, to speak at our National Recreation Parks Association this September in regards to Jill's Buddy Camp in hopes of not only growing it here within our own Commonwealth but also within the nation, so very excited about that opportunity. Uh, here's just some other pictures from Buddy Camp. You see putt-putt, we go swimming, we go to the fire department. This is Mill Mountain. Uh, we have the fire department. We do some hosing, and you see some reading there. So some other, uh, programs and events that we also take care of within the Parks and Rec Department is our Fourth of July Festival and the Fireworks Show. You know, we just recently got through with that, and I think it was a great success. Definitely a great location for the fireworks, and I very much enjoyed doing it there. Our, our festival downtown was a, was a very good success as well. Had over 20 vendors that, that was there for that. Uh, we also do a shooting straight youth archery camp each year. Uh, this is our third year doing that, and it continues to stay steady in the numbers. Uh, we also partner with Kuanis Club for the Easter egg hunt. We do that actually at Kuanis Park. And if you remember, we used to do it at Downtown Park, and, uh, I was always worried because the road was so close by and those types of things, and there's so many children out there. Uh, when we came to talk with the Kuanis Club, we decided to move it to the Kuanis Park. It was just the best situation because you can categorize them by age groups, and they're all inside the, the fence, so you sort of corral them a little bit. So, uh, very good partnership. Kuanis Club provided bikes and prizes as well as Walmart for this event. Stand-up paddle boarding. We work with a group, um, at Cleter Lake to do stand-up paddle boarding as well as kayak and canoeing and those types of items. So we're, you know, we don't really have the, the accessibility to have the river or the lake here in Christiansburg, but being able to partner with folks on those areas is, is a huge help for us to be able to provide those types of programs to our citizens. The Tony L. Huddleston Trout Rowio, many of you know Tony Huddleston. Tony was an employee of ours and left this world way too soon. He was a very big impact within our community. He coached baseball at Christiansburg High School, young hired. He was a part of Christiansburg as, as much as I've ever seen. And, uh, when he passed, unfortunately, he tragically drowned on the river doing what he loved to do, fish. We decided that we wanted to find a way to honor Tony and his efforts to the Uh, we decided that we wanted to find a way to honor Tony and his efforts to the town and, uh, we know that he's smiling, uh, um, by this event here. It brings a lot of kids out, keeps them involved and is in an outdoor environment to where, uh, kids aren't sitting inside or outside playing and doing things, uh, constructive. Our truck-or-treat, that's, that handle that goes with our Halloween, uh, uh, our five-k Getting Scary on the Huckleberry was a show in a minute, uh, but we always have a lot of the big trucks that come in, uh, this was, we just tried to do something a little bit different, you know? We've seen trunk-or-treat, we've seen touch-a-truck, but this was, we wanted to go truck-or-treat. So, we would have the trucks out there and they would be able to get prizes and candy and those types of things and all of the, uh, participants would be able to sit in the trucks or, or, uh, any of the large equipment and it, it was just been a big hit every year. Eight-mile walking challenge, uh, uh, many compliments to Councilman Hubbard on this, uh, he was the driving force behind getting this going, uh, when the bridge was, uh, completed, the Remco W. Knowles Bridge, that basically, I, I remember saying that, uh, the opening of that, that it was a gateway of opportunity and that's exactly what it was. Uh, it was able to connect us in many different ways. And one of the ways is this eight-mile walking challenge and, and it shows through this eight-mile walking challenge that, uh, we do have great connectivity between Blacksburg, Montgomery County and the Town of Christiansburg. Uh, each year that we've done it, we've had anywhere between eighty, seventy to eighty, uh, walkers, um, we've had walkers from, uh, uh, as, as young as in strollers, uh, all the way up to seventy-five years old and, uh, it's just been a great event. Uh, it's one of those items that you, it's not a race, so you just walk at your own pace and, uh, um, it's been very fun and very enjoyable.[708.69]
Let me know, hey, this is what's going on. She'll actually forward me emails that she has sent to her current. Our opinion is, why use town resources at this point for something that I do think in is gonna get taken care of? Um, twenty-seven thirty-five Runaway Street, that one has been on the market for sale for a year and a half since we started this program. We didn't actively pursue that one for that reason, hoping that it would be sold, it would get taken down, and we wouldn't have to force their hand on it. I did go by there today, and that one is still sitting there in about the shape for sale, so that is one that we have added back, and we will try to pursue that one here shortly. Uh, so far for twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen, that being one of them, we've identified four buildings that we are gonna try to pursue for demolition. Two of them have had notices and other attempts made to contact the property owners. We send a notice that certified mail, they will not sign one. Uh, one of them is an out-of-town resident, had no way to get in contact, can't locate him, uh, that makes it very difficult. Uh, the other two that we have, we just haven't had an opportunity yet to take action on them. Before the Blighted Structures Program was initiated in January of twenty-seventeen, this is something that, as time allowed, and as we noticed when we already did. Seven buildings were demolished in town between twenty-eleven and twenty-fourteen. There's a list of them there. One fifteen Fisher Street, four oh nine Radford Street, eighteen forty Palmer, seven fifty Montgomery, two oh four Heaven Street, seven eighty-five Radford, eleven seventy-five one hundred and thirty three ten Runaway Street. This goes into our current Blighted Structures Program. This was the first one that we had down. This one was identified on January fourth of twenty-seventeen and was down by February the sixth of twenty-seventeen. There's the lot as it set after the demolition. Twenty-one forty Ham Street was down roughly six months after we sent the initial violation notice. Six fifty A G Street was taken down middle of June of twenty-seventeen, so again, roughly six months after the violation notice. Fifteen Depot Street was taken down in July of twenty-seventeen. Eleven thirty-five Radford Street was an ongoing problem that dates back ten years. Uh, finally, we, you know, I'll be the first to admit, there's probably times that, uh, we tend to play a little longer than we should, but we do try to work with people. Uh, after getting excuse after excuse after excuse from this, the owner of this property, we just felt like it was time to move forward, and we did that, and this one was taken down in January of twenty-eighteen. That's the church that was back up here at three forty-five West Street. That came down October twenty-third, I believe, of twenty-seventeen. There's the way it was then on the left, and there's the lot as it sits today. Four oh five Depot Street, that's the one I mentioned earlier. It's ninety-five percent completed, as you'll see. There's just some sidewalk and debris that needs to be cleaned up on it. Six fifty Harwood Street, this lady was given two extensions because she did not have the money to take a building down. So we did grant her two separate extensions on this one. This one just went on. This was one of the original ones. This was January fourth of twenty-seventeen and just did get finished up today, but there's a reason why it got finished up today. The demo process wasn't working too well for them, so we got a report Monday morning that the house had collapsed. So we issued an emergency demolition notice and had a contractor up there, and that's how the house looks today.
Jerry, those, is that the house or the outbuildings? Or is that?
Those were all houses. Now, there was one at one fifteen, uh, White Pine Drive, you noticed that was a two-car garage.
Okay, please, okay.
This is the one I talked about, Steel Tidler Inc. or three thirty-five Depot Street. Again, we've not taken aggressive action on it because I do feel like that there's a light at the end of the tunnel on this one, uh, hopefully soon.
What do you mean by that?
You mean restoration or?
Probably get a clear title.
Yeah, they're trying to get a clear title on this.
I think they're probably planning on taking it down and duplexes possibly or something.
Well, I haven't had confirmation. I think the, what the owner is thinking is that she does have some people interested in buying the property to develop it. So I think the process would be, once that deed is clear, they're able to finally go through with the sale. The next purchaser will tear that down and, and tends to develop something on there.
Jerry, I see this is, uh, more than up in the windows. Is it something that falls on the owner's obligation or the town's?
Well, we try to get the owners to do that. Most of the time, if we contact them, they'll gladly go out and do it. All the time, we don't have a way to get a hold of them. So if we see one sitting open, we, after a few days, we're unable to get in touch with the contractor or, or the owner to have it done, we'll go do it by means of a private contractor.
Now, for the cost of that, if, uh, I take it, if we demoed ours, for instance, if we demoed this, would we put that cost? Cause that is material and man-hours in that.
Every cent we spend gets put in a lien.
Okay.
I actually, the, uh, property that's been such a controversy down on Runaway Street, I actually went down there back last summer, and the doors had been kicked in, so I went to Home Depot, bought padlocks, locks, went down there and screwed them back shut myself. But later on, they got kicked in again.
Right, that's, that's your time of money, but your, your, you know, that's citizens, you did this on your own, I understand that. But wh- what I mean is now that the, the property has sort of brought all this about, um, you know, we have somebody wanting to buy it, and I understand working with landowners, I, I would agree with that. But what we want to be fair for us, especially your time of money, you did that in kind to take care of that. But if the town went down there and did that, if we couldn't get a hold of the land, uh, the owner or landowner, shouldn't we part of issuing any, uh, permits or clearing any liens? Shouldn't we pass that cost along to them that they have to settle that prior to, to moving forward any type of?
Yes, once the house goes to sale, once it goes to all the process of being sold, before that thing will officially be sold, all those fees will have to be made good with the payment at closing.
Let me ask you this. I own that house, it's, uh, and I tell you, um, well, it's not the only one right now, but I'm gonna fix it up real soon. All right, and then how long are you gonna give me to fix that up?
I'll show you some case law shortly where some localities have been turned down by the state of the state though because they weren't giving people enough time. One instance, I'm gonna show you, um, the locality gave a person sixty days to do some repair work for the structure, but the state of the state didn't feel like that for enough time. I mean, something like that. Number one, I don't think that building is capable of getting repaired. Let's say it is. In that condition, I don't know that it would be unreasonable to give them a year or two. I mean, you know, that, the Property Maintenance Code doesn't give you a specific time. It leaves it up to the building official or the locality to determine what they think is a reasonable time.
So I could just bring you on for that? Do I?
Oh, 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 that's, yeah.
I'm a little bit short right now, but I think it doesn't have the money in six months.
Uh, eleven thirty-five Radford Street strung us along for ten years, but I assure you, that one never happened.
How do you, how do you prevent that?
We'll just be more strict with our deadlines. You know, and there's a, there's an appeals process. If we send a violation notice and we tell somebody we want this down in thirty days, they've got fourteen days to file an appeal. If they don't agree with that time period, they can file an appeal with our local appeals board. We'll have a hearing if the local appeals board feels that we've been too restrictive on that, and they need more time, they'll grant it to them.
And you know, I think I have to tell you this, but council supports you on being as aggressive as you can be. I think I'm speaking for everybody on council. We, we want to see you be aggressive.
I'll be the first to admit, uh, and that's something I struggle with, you know. I struggle with people's personal situations sometimes. I mean, you know, you wouldn't believe the stories that we hear. And honestly, that, it's hard for me, but I understand that, and, uh, we, we intend to. Again, eleven thirty-five Radford Street, when I look through the case file on that one, and I see all the notices that were sent, and I see all the meetings that we had with this person, and I sit back and think, I can't believe that we let this go on this long without putting our foot down. But that's always kind of been what we've done in Christiansburg. We've worked with people and worked with people, but yeah, certainly ten years is far too long. For something like that, we'd be setting that.
Hey Jerry, I have a question. Before you tear it home down, uh, what's your process? A home like that one has been sitting there for years, has a lot of things living in it.
Yes.
That's all I can say. What do y'all do?
We hire an extermination company, come out and set traps, just to try to catch whatever we can catch coming out of it. Uh, at that point, once that's done, once all the violation notices are sent, you know, there's idle searches we have to do, uh, we'll at that point pursue with accepting bids and going through the bid process to have it taken down. You know, we're, we're very conscientious about some of these that are within a neighborhood of rats and.
Uh, with this process, how much time does this take of yours or plenty of people? Or how much time does it take the whole program?
Uh, property maintenance, honestly, you'd probably stand to be under someone that just did property maintenance. I mean, it takes a lot of time to do the notices, to do the follow-up with the, I mean, again, once we send a notice out, what that does is, for lack of better terms, start a debate between whoever the, the person is that we're finding in violation. And it takes a lot of time to sort through all that. Um, when we're really busy, I don't always have time to address property maintenance. And, you know, we can get to it when we can, and, and no doubt, sometimes someone's had them longer than you, Jerry.
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
The neighborhood that I'm in here downtown, there are a couple houses, we've been here, we moved here eight years ago, and there are a couple houses that appeared to have never been and had it since the day we moved in. How do those get addressed?
Complaint basis. Our, our property maintenance enforcement is one hundred percent complaint based. Uh, if anyone notices something like that, we would want them to file a complaint with us, and then we would follow up with it. Um, I found one today. I've got a picture up here. I'll show you. I was out taking some photos for this presentation tonight over on Montgomery Street. I probably hadn't been on Montgomery Street myself in a year and a half or longer, and happened to notice a structure that was sitting there, and I'm almost certain with vacant, when you see it, I think you would agree with me.
Yeah, cause on Stone Street, there's a two-story, I think, it's gray.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it doesn't appear that anyone lived in there, at least for the eight years I've lived here.
Yes.
And then that, your house is not complete on the corner, I used to answer, has the White House right next to it. For the eight years I've been here, it doesn't appear that anyone lived there.
Yeah.
And I remember for the first three or four years, we lived there, there was a toilet on the sidewalk.
If, if you wouldn't mind, shoot me an email or something on that, uh, and I can find the addresses, and I'll be happy to follow up with them. But again, unless we're out in town and we happen to stumble across it, or we get a complaint, that's the way we handle it.
And how do I get in touch with you?
Uh, I'll give you my contact information shortly, yes ma'am. This is the one I spoke about earlier. This property's been for sale since we started this program back in January. Uh, I did contact someone that had an interest in this property on several occasions. They continued to tell me, we're working on it, we're working on it, we think we've got it sold. As of today, that's when those pictures were taken, it's still not sold, so that is one we will put on our list for this year and, and have taken down. But understand, we only have thirty thousand dollars budgeted for this program. Some of these can cost up to ten thousand dollars to have taken down. So could I sit here tonight and tell you that yes, we will absolutely get all four of these down this year? I don't think I can unless, you know, we have the ability to find funding somewhat for it. Or i- if the, if the owners decide to do it themselves, and I feel like that once we start the process here, I'll feel certain that probably up here, they'll take this one down for us.
And can I, uh, one question about that? If you had a choice of taking, um, money to hire a person to help you or to knock down multiple buildings, which is more important right now to your program?
I mean, for me, and not necessarily speaking about property maintenance, but for us, it would be the help. I mean, that's one reason why we, since I found Bane on the free agent market, we're trying to that. I'm gonna talk a little bit now about what all goes into property maintenance, just some highlights of it. Again, as I explained, our property maintenance enforcement is one hundred percent complaint. Enforcement, enforcement is limited to the unsafe structures provision of section one oh five of the Virginia Maintenance Code. I'll explain what that means shortly. The Property Maintenance Code is often used by complainants who gotta dispute with their neighbor. You wouldn't believe how many times I'm dealing with one right now. There's a downstairs running off of a house over near a property line of a fifty acre field. And now that's an issue, and I'm trying to figure out how to, what we can do about it depending on that. I'm not sure there's anything we can do about it, but that's the kind of stuff that we get. Um, and, and I've said this before when we've been here about this, a lot of complaints we find out that there was nothing wrong with the rental unit when the tenant was in good standing with their rent, but once they become behind on their rent, then it's under volition, and we have to sit through that. What we enforce, we enforce the unstr- unsafe structures related to residential dwelling units. This is an excerpt from the Virginia Construction Code. Says upon finding by the local building department, following a complaint by a tenant of a residential dwelling unit that is subject to such complaint that there may be a violation of the unsafe structure provisions of part three of Virginia Uniform Statewide Building Code, also known as the Virginia Maintenance Code, the local building department shall enforce that provision. And we do. I'll explain to you what we don't enforce. This is the definition of what an unsafe structure is. Um, basically, it's determined by the code official to be dangerous to the health, safety, and welfare, and that it has unsafe equipment, it's damaged, decayed, dilapidated, structurally unsafe, or may have an unstable foundation, or a partial or complete collapse is likely. And, and I did want to point out to this right here about the boarding up. If we see a structure that is open and vacant, we are required to have those boarded up. Uh, a vacant, open structure automatically kicks it into what's termed an unsafe structure.
But we pass this cost on to the?
Yes, we do.
Oh, yeah.
Um, some things that make a structure unsafe would be lack of fire, safe guards, unsafe equipment, being electrical, could be mechanical, things like that, plumbing, uh, damage or dilapidation, and again, if it's in danger of collapse. This is, uh, just an excerpt from the Property Maintenance Code commentary. Again, it says only structures with major defects or life-threatening conditions are to be considered unsafe. This is another term. Essentially, this is an unsafe structure, but it is worth it a little bit different. This is what's called a structure that's unfit for human occupancy. When we would post one as a structure unfit for human occupancy, typically, what we've always had is unsanitary conditions. Uh, I'm sure most of you are aware of the issue that's been going on up on Dais Street with the dog animals and that type of thing. We actually had to have that person taken out of that house because the house was in such an unsanitary condition. These are things that are in the Property Maintenance Code, but because they're not under the unsafe structures provisions, they're things that we don't enforce. And that's one reason why I went down Montgomery Street today. And it's why I tend to believe that the town is at the point where it could use a code enforcement person. We have hundreds of houses sitting around that have issues with, uh, land that needs to be maintained and clean in a safe and secure sanitary condition. Grading and, uh, grading and drainage, road garbage, exhaust vents that are incomplete, or the, the vents at the ends are, are worn off. Accessory, there are more accessory structures in town, as I've been out today looking at this than you would believe, that look like they're gonna fall down, need paint, you know, you name it, they need it. I've got a few pictures of them. Protective treatment. I'll show you several photos of houses that have peeling paint, that the shutters need paint, uh, just various things like that. You'll see all exterior door surfaces, door frames and windows, cornices, porches, trim, balconies, decks, fences, all shall be maintained in good condition. All exterior wood surfaces are supposed to be protected from decay. The longer those things sit there unprotected, the longer, the, the quicker that house is gonna, uh, corrode. Peeling, flaking, and chip paint, windows, doors, and skylights. Uh, oxidation stains shall be removed from exterior surfaces. Premises identification. This is one that if we see, we will follow up because for nine-one-one purposes, uh, we feel like that that's important. Uh, if I do go by a structure and I don't see a premises identification on it, we will follow up with that. Roots and drainage. A lot of people don't think gutters are required, but with our soil types in Christiansburg, gutters are required, and the water's supposed to be dispersed away from the building. Uh, many houses in town you'll see are missing downstairs, some of them are missing the entire gutter system. Upstairs walls are supposed to be free from holes, breaks, slurs, or rotting materials. Decorative features such as cornices, belt courses, corbels, terracotta trim, all that stuff's supposed to be maintained in good repair with proper rain coverage and a safe condition. Overhanging extensions, stairways, decks, porches, and balconies, and chimneys and towers. The, again, this, all the photos I'm getting ready to show you, uh, there's a few that aren't from Montgomery Street, but just within that one area of town, I probably could have written up five hundred Property Maintenance Code violations today if I would have had the time to have gotten at them and went to each one of those buildings and looked at all four sides of it. If we would obtain a search warrant, it's hard to tell in some of them what we would find inside. But, you know, this one here, you can see the, the fascia board there is in need of painting. It's rotten in a few spots, it looks like. The siding is in need of painting. It's hard to see on this one, but basically the same thing. The fascia board that runs up the side of the house to the roof is in need of painting on this one. Part of the trim on the back is falling off and is missing, uh, back there. This one has kind of a variety of things, probably some junk and debris in the front. Again, look like they've got something, I don't know if you can see, but back up here, it looks like they have a little tarp on the roof, probably has a hole in the roof. Broken window, gutters missing across the front. Same type of things, uh, gutter missing, the fascia board's falling off the house, probably needs some painting on it. This would be an example of one, this house has been vacant for some time. It doesn't look great, but they keep the exterior of the property in fairly good condition. It does need some painting on the front and stuff like that. The front porch has fallen off of it. Uh, I do believe that there's some issues with the guttering, but it's vacant. Uh, they keep it secure, and they maintain the exterior of the property. As long as they do that, there's nothing that says anyone has to live in a building. It can sit there vacant as long as the homeowner chooses, as long as they're keeping up with the maintenance on the exterior. That's an accessory structure over in that area. You can see there, it's growth up the back, a little bit of junk and debris, needs quite a bit of painting, probably needs a new roof. This is the one I was talking about earlier, uh, that I really didn't even know was sitting there until today. But as I was out on that street today, I noticed this house. I do think it's vacant. And as you can see, it's in horrible condition. This was put on our list today, and we will be following up with it in hopes of getting it taken down. That's the side view over there. Probably, if I had to guess, these cars are probably have expired tags and stickers, and they're probably, uh, uh, code portion of violation issues, I would imagine. Again, there's an accessory structure that the siding's falling off of. This one's right up behind our office here. Um, it needs quite a bit of work to the exterior of it. That one right there probably needs a new roof. It looks like several areas where shingles are missing. Uh, could possibly be an issue with the car right there. Um, it probably has a handful of violations on it. We would take a closer look at it. This is the one, uh, Mr. Walts brought to our attention tonight. Again, this was a meth lab that was found in there, uh, two or three years ago now. That one poses a challenge in that we require the property owner to do air tests, what they call SWAC test, make sure that if it is contaminated, that it's clean. The problem there is, they don't have the money they say to do that. So there again, is the locality gonna be the ones that's gonna decide, well, we'll go in, we'll do the test. If it does come back positive, we've seen some of these, uh, and not in Christiansburg, but I fear from other places, some of them, you could literally have to remove the drywall, the carpet, replayer the plumbing system, rip out all the ductwork, because once the stuff gets in the ductwork, it's contaminated, the HVAC system. It could cost ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars to clean one of these things up. I don't know if that's a cost that here that we wanna incur, so we keep it posted as long as they're keeping up with the exterior of the property and keeping it mowed and that type of stuff. And Mr. Walts, you're probably by there more obviously than I am. If you ever notice stuff like that that's not being taken care of, you know, we would wanna know about it.
I'm careless about, well.
Yeah.
I care about the stuff that's not decided on.
Yeah, well, again, Property Maintenance Code states that as long as the structure's secure and preventivementary, but there's not a lot we can do about it. Uh, you know, if you were to notice someone coming and going from there, you know, we would certainly wanna know.
Well, there have been people coming and going from there, but they said that, we talked to the sheriff office, they said they're allowed to go in there as long as they're not staying there, they're, they're allowed to come and go in there. And that from time to time.
I'll reach out to the homeowner again on that. This one is up on Schaefer Street, definitely probably has some issues with it. It's not horrible, but this one's been vacant probably for about ten years. But they do typically keep the grass and everything put on. It's in fairly good condition on the outside. Think this is an old picture from last year from on Spruce Street. Uh, you know, again, just your basic stuff, it needs painting around some of these areas. Uh, believe it or not, window screens are required. There's several window screens missing out of it, a little bit of junk and debris here. This one was somewhat of a, a success story. This one was open and vacant, so we posted it as an unsafe structure, got the homeowner to secure it, and told him, I, I, I think we may have gave him three months to get the exterior of it cleaned up. Uh, this was last year, I think, and that's what it looks like today. The building's still vacant, but he keeps the outside cleaned up, and he keeps the, the exterior of it in pretty good shape. This one is over on Cambria Street, up by Cambria Baptist Church. That's another structure that I feel's been vacant for some time. But I, I think we have actually had a few high grass complaints about this one, which they've taken care of. But again, the exterior of the building's in, in good shape. All the doors are secured, the windows are secured on it, so as long as it wants to sit there, it can. This is at Cooper Street, I believe. We posted this one two weeks ago. We have sent a certified notice. It was attempted, they attempted delivery on it four or five times in that week, and they refused, refused it. This is on Moose Drive. This is gonna be a difficult one to deal with because I think there's someone staying there, believe it or not. Um, when you're having to remove someone from their home, it does make it far more difficult to do. This one is on our list, and we plan to get on this one here soon. This one, and then again, I didn't have a picture of it, but the other side of the property is in bad shape as well. It's got, uh, an old storage building on it. It's about to fall down. It's got debris all over it, so definitely not just a building, that type of property's got, got problems. There's, I forget the exact address of this one. I think it's thirty-five seventy-five Runaway Street. Uh, out-of-town property owner, they're from Florida. This house, I dare say, has been vacant again probably for eight or ten years. But you can notice that the siding has been taken off of it. It's been sitting that way for a while, so it's gonna continue, continue to be dilapidated. Uh, this is on our list, and we intend to follow up with this one too.
Hey Jerry, the houses you showed us that, uh, you, you, the homeowner's not keeping up with, would you say, uh, about, Jerry, or Reynolds?
Uh, you know, I'd say it's probably fifty-fifty. Quite a few of them are owned by other property owners. And that poses another, another challenge. Most of them, they don't want their house to be in that condition.
Correct.
They don't have the money to fix it. So what battle we have is, we can gain compliance, we can send them a violation notice. They don't comply, we'll take them to court, judge will, you know, issue in our favor based on something like this, but if you- judge will, you know, issue in our favor based on something like this, but if he does, they already don't have the money. So we're still ha- we're still hamstrung. So, again, it would fall back on us, are we going to take the initiative to spend ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars? This one here is not prepared, but in some cases they are, probably ten or fifteen thousand dollars to make them available again. You know, is the government going to do that?
You, you, I think when we started this, we, you know, actually, you, you disclosed this to us that you work with the property owner and for, and put them in touch with like the big tenant tag, if painting needs to be done, or something needs to be adjusted, you know, general labor, you're still doing that with these primary homeowners. You're not having these, these absentee landlords that live out of town, who don't give a hoot about what our town looks like. But you still push that, and I know you work with them.
Oh, I mean, this one I hear, I'm trying everything I can to find someone that, again, I don't think this house is repairable. The assessment on it's thirty-four hundred dollars. I don't think there's anyone that could say that this house can be repaired.
Right.
Uh, I feel like the underneath it, just on a few photos I was able to get underneath it, I think it's a termite, and I'm not sure before it's not going to fall through on it, that's why this one is a concern to us, that we need to get on. But yeah, I mean, I've tried to call out to a few churches, I've called down in Richmond to DSS to try to find, is there anyone that can assist this guy with finding him a place to live? Uh, and so, you know, so far, I haven't been able to accomplish anything on that. How old is he? Uh, probably mid-fifties, maybe late fifties.
This is the old family home of the place, is that correct?
That is correct.
And the mother and sister live somewhere over here, uh, ish.
The mother lives on Mont Drive, and she's elderly and not in very good health. So I've actually went over there with, uh, once with an ordinance officer, and once by myself, to try and deliver the notice to them, to see if we can't get something going here, but it's never answered, our phone calls are never returned. I do have a family member that I think through the planning department, I was able to obtain, I think it's his sister's phone number. I've called twenty times off that to that phone number, never get a return phone call, never answered. Um, then just a little bit here about boarding up, again. Anytime there's a vacant existing structure, unsecured or open, it shall be deemed as an unsafe structure, and that's why we take the process we need to have them boarded up and secured. When an unsafe structure or structure unfit for human contact is open for public entry, cut out short here, has to be secured against public entry, whether or not legal action to compel compliance has been instituted. This was what I was speaking about earlier, this was an appeals case that was, uh, went against the locality. I think this was from the city of Emporia. And, and, and what my point is, you really have to be careful when you condemn a house, number one, and two, when you issue it to be taken down. Um, but basically, this says that, uh, the locality didn't feel like it was a cost, uh, the cost of repairs would exceed the value of the building, that was the locality's perspective. The board found that the order to demolish, to demolish the buildings was inconsistent with provisions of the building maintenance code. Buildings were reasonably secured against entry, were structurally sound, and were not unhealthy. Given these circumstances, the buildings, buildings did not meet the criteria for demolition. Also, the state building code technical review board found that the sixty day time period set for the repair of the buildings was ins- unreasonable due to the extent the repairs needed. If the public nuisance presents an immediate and imminent threat to life or property, co-official may have the structure demolished. And then it goes on to say, just at five, nine, six. Make sure that all notices have been given, or that a true emergency exists before you take issue or take notice of having one taken down. Um, and again, just a little quick thing here, it does say, the co-official must resist the pressure to declare something unsafe simply to deal with an annoying condition. The Virginia Supreme Court and the attorney general have pointed out that a locality may not condemn a building simply because it's an eyesore. Can you believe how many times we have people call and say, can you condemn this thing, because we don't like the way it looks? We can't do that. Any questions?
Please, that you can condemn an eyesore, but can you have it, uh, can you have this no longer an eyesore?
You can, but we only enforce the unsafe structures provisions of the code when it residential, when it deals with the residential ground. We don't have the staff here. Here's how I feel about property maintenance. On a complaint-based system, when someone files a complaint, and, and let's say we make the person complain, we're only making the person about the complaint happy, although you can probably go around town and fire three or four hundred other buildings that are in the same condition. My opinion is, we need to have a, an active enforcement program so that property maintenance is enforced equally and justly all over town to everybody. The way we're staffed, we can't do that.
That would be my observation, I, I, I want to applaud the presentation. I actually was wondering, wondering, was wondering if it would be the same thing we saw before, this was a great presentation. And I think some things that resonate with me is, I've been quick to, to rush to judgment on, you know, especially a recent situation that's brought this back to the forefront, but as far as Mr. Hubbard's comment about being aggressive, I think he's done a good job exercising your judgment on how to spend what council has given, or what this board has given you as not only direction but funding to do that. Mr. Showalor's comment was, the property owner pays, but yeah, uh, it, it may be at a lien situation, and it's paid at closing at some future date, it might be six weeks or it might be sixty years when that property transfers, that we get payback, so there still has to be that front end. So just to put, uh, based on the presentation this evening, uh, and having personally visited the properties on Rutherford Street, I was actually gassed that we had that, but what I see is, we've got a lot of properties that could make your breath away with this one on. So I, I'm impressed with the way you've exercised your judgment, and if this council, my last statement, my closing statement would be, if this council wants to be more aggressive, then we need to think about what that, what that program would look like, what it would cost, and how we would do it from there. But I'm, I think with what you've had and what you've shown, you've exercised good judgment.
Thank, I appreciate it.
I want to, well, my issue with boarding up was, we're not going to go through the extent, for instance, on Rutherford Street, of, uh, a thou- let's say a thousand dollars, and of course you did that on your own time, uh, boarding that up, but I don't think we want to place a lien for the cost of just boarding up a house, even though the code says we can't pursue legal action. It's almost cheaper for us to board it up, if the hu- but we do contact them, tell them they need to board it up, and then time passes, and then we take the initiative to do it, which I still think is cheaper than taking legal action just to board it up, correct? I would assume that.
We have the authority to do that without legal action.
But we will not place lien, but if that property is sold during the process, which means we have worked with the property owner, they have sold the property, it's, my issue is, we need to recoup that money, and we don't have a lien on it, which is boarding up.
Yeah, we didn't.
We place a lien for it, just boarding up.
Yes.
Do you feel the property owner, if it's not paid?
Yeah, I was explaining how, there've been a couple of different situations that's happened on that property. We've had to board that up multiple times.
Okay.
Because every time we've boarded it up, it's been broken back into.
Right.
But I think the previous two times we boarded it up, those liens have been placed. The last time we had it boarded up, which was May fourth of this year, uh, I received a copy of the bill from the contractor. I knew who had control of that building at that time, and I said, let me see, rather than us go through the process of putting a lien on it, it was four hundred dollars, I said, let me just see if I can't get this paid for you. I said, if you don't get a check from this person in two weeks, let me know, I'll keep a copy of this bill, we'll forward on finance and valves for the lien against it. They did pay it, we didn't have to do that.
I'd like Mr. Dyson, uh, your presentation was great, awesome, great presentation. And I would like to see us have a work session, and you come to us with what you need to make this work.
Sure. Well, I think, I think that would be great, but I think that Randy and Jerry, when it's a down with budget, they can establish that, that then gets recommended to us to the, to the budget process.
No, no. If we want certain things, the cobbles, then we've got to be competent.
Well, we have to prove it.
That's right.
The way to do that is, we better know what's going to happen. Well, that's, that's what the budget process is for.
I know, because of what you have.
Yeah, and then, you know, just, most of you probably know, but we did have a fair fa- a really expensive property maintenance issue, issue with the wall we just repaired behind us here, that's a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Sorry.
It looks nice, Ken.
It does look really good.
Well, I think the question, it could, it could be answered in a work session or whatever, is, does council want to become more aggressive with this? And to what extent, and then let the staff make a recommendation, how that would be, how that would be requested, and that. But could we, our discussion would be, do we want to go be more aggressive, and to what extent? And then, then you would also have a chat.
And the cost.
And the cost, right.
It's made of cost.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Why did you agree with all of them?
No.
Didn't have those problems in Rutherford.
I'm, I'm, I'm...
You didn't have those problems in Rutherford.
Oh, I, may I tell you what, it is, it is an ongoing thing. Uh, the city of Rutherford actually has eighteen inspectors that they've about, about the city to, to focus on neighborhoods or areas. And, uh, our building department in Rutherford only has six inspectors. So that'll show you the amount of effort and cost it takes to try to get your arms around blighted areas. And, uh, and Jerry's exactly right, the people here, they, it's not that they don't want to fix their houses up, they can't afford to. And by the time you enforce this code on them, take them to court, it still doesn't give them the money to fix their house. It just makes it more legal for the municipalities to be attached to it, to take it down. So, you know, it's, it's an ongoing problem, the older your city gets, the more it gets. And, uh, but yeah, it's a, it's a big department, been with the city of Rutherford.
Thank you.
You know, I read in the paper a couple of weeks ago, and the article is about Detroit. And I realize that Christiansburg is not Detroit, but in the article, it stated, it said that eighteen thousand homes demolished in Detroit. And they said, you could not tell how much of a positive effect it had on the city, because a lot of these, uh, dilapidated homes, you know, where gangs would go to, and drug people, and, and when you get rid of these things, then it makes it a lot tougher on these people to do this, and of course, it makes the, the town a lot, or the city a lot better too.
Blighted areas attract crime. So people will go in buildings and do things in there that they would normally not do in normal homes. But yeah, it is, it's a problem. And like Jerry said, boarding up is the basic thing that you can do with it, you know, because that prevents people from leaving those buildings.
Thanks, Ken. Uh, next on our agenda, let's change it up a little bit and have the events coordinator, Casey Jenkins, present regarding the Culture Crossing brochure that he has diligently worked on.
Uh, good evening, thanks for having me here today. I'll be very brief about this, um, so, uh, Christiansburg, the place to be, right? And that's kind of our tagline, and we want to build up this town with that tagline in mind, and, uh, Brad and Recreation has done a very good job of that, utilizing the assets and resources that we have. And so that got me to thinking, probably on day two of the job here, really, um, what other resources and assets do we have in this town? And a lot of that actually goes into the cultural gems that we have right here in the town of Christiansburg, both history and art. Um, we have a lot of history, we need to work on our art a little bit, but essentially what I wanted to do was create a walking trail of the sort that would highlight all the history and arts of the town. Something that both residents and tourists alike can be proud of when they go into our downtown streets and Christiansburg at large. So what you see there in that brochure, uh, which is also online as well, are twenty-six different stops that highlight history and arts, a variety of subjects, uh, that we have within our town limits here. And again, the idea, these cultural gems, as I like to call them, are really all around, and you just have to notice them in our backyard here. So it really is hopefully a service that we can provide to our residents and tourists alike, um, things that Linda and the Oaks can provide. Um, this project actually was a collaborative effort, effort with myself, um, the Montgomery Museum, and, uh, at least likely from Montgomery Tourism. And so this brochure is also in all the local hotels here in Christiansburg, and in Blacksburg for that matter. Um, all of the Christiansburg facilities, um, hotels like the Oaks as well. And so we really want to showcase, uh, the treasures that we have in our backyard. And so, kind of to sum up, this is something that, um, again, it's, it's one of many projects, and with somebody that's interested in history like myself, I was really glad to put together. Um, and hopefully will also spur more artwork, um, as Linda had alluded to earlier, and Marty and I are working together uh, to make that happen here as well for the town. So again, one of many resources that we can provide for our town, um, not just downtown, but the town at large, for something that we can be proud of with all the gems that we have in our backyard here. So it is spread across town wide, and we hope people will utilize that and make a day of it, or two days, um, to take advantage of the history in our backyard. So just one of many projects that I've been working on and had a lot of help with as well, um, but wanted to bring that to your attention. Um, and something that we can be, something that residents and tourists alike can be proud of. So that's kind of it in closing, but I'll take any questions if there are any for it.
This is great, this is great. I was, I complained when it took the history out of the comprehensive plan, and now if we put it back in there, and I think we need a whole lot more of this stuff.
Yeah, and part of the idea, again, history, uh, is always going to be around us, um, is that it's, it's going to spur more interest for our community like that, and again, specifically art, where we have highlighted art in there, but hope to have more, as I said, working with Marty on that endeavor, um, to make ourselves a dynamic town, um, like any other town across this country. Something that we can all be proud of.
Uh, would you address real quick what Linda said about art for the sidewalk art, the crossing art? Has that been looked at, or will be looked at, or?
Yes, so we are beginning to look at that, I think, actually in our next central business meeting, we're going to talk about that a bit more as well, about, uh, public art and, uh, downtown art. Um, there is a lot of research that I've also surfaced, uh, in regards to how the arts can affect the town, uh, socially, economically, culturally, and so, uh, there's a plethora of reasons why I think we should put more time and investment into this. Um, and at some point, make it as robust as something like Recreation, which is something that, you know, the town does a very, very good job of, and it's utilizing all of our resources, so we highlight and heighten arts and history as well, and, uh, make this town more dynamic with what it can offer for our residents.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
Oh, and I, I should add very quickly, Nika did the design of that, and so it's very nice to share, so she get a lot of credit too.
All right, the committee reports, uh, this afternoon, show up the Water, Sewer, Solid Waste Committee, discussion on reprimand, privatization, private, privatization of garbage service.
All right, so a few weeks ago, uh, uh, the Water, Sewer, Solid Waste Committee, now it's an ongoing discussion, but we've finally come to a point where, um, staff needs an approval to RFP privatizing our residential garbage service. Um, again, we're not implementing anything by doing this, we're just going to embed it, and then see if the cost benefit our residents, if we use the cost for residential backup. Uh, so staff felt more comfortable, Randy felt more comfortable, if the approval came from the council, uh, to RFP it, so we can look at it hopefully here in a few months to see if it, if it will evolve. What would be good, uh, my turn? Successful?
Cheaper.
Do you have a cheaper one than they don't know yet for years?
You know, I thought it was, you know, probably a, a good idea to look into this. The only thing that hit me was, we just recently bought these new trucks, new garbage trucks. I don't know how much they cost, but I know they cost a lot. And if we adopted something else, and I'm not sure what we'd do with the trucks that we just bought and paid a fortune for, so I wasn't sure if we should wait a little bit longer until these things depreciate, so.
Well, that's going to be part of the RFP processes, any company that's going to take over will also buy our trucks at...
Okay.
On that, that's what we'll discuss. We're also staring down the barrel, uh, of replacing... We're also staring down the barrel, uh, of replacing those trucks here in the next probably eight years.
They're about five years old, uh, fifteen year life, it's a six.
Right. And we're also looking at, that you're buying a rear end loader at half a million dollars. That they could probably extend another year, but this is still some major capital improvements that we're more happy to, uh, look at. So an RFP will only give us an option, so we don't have to pursue it. Off the line, and I think Brad was both quoted in the paper, if it doesn't benefit our residents, I'm not gonna support it, but we haven't looked at it. And for years, uh, I've served on this committee for years, but recycling was not an option because we, you know, it was always looked at, the town has to provide this recycling service. And guess what? We couldn't, we couldn't roll out services which was gonna cost residents twenty dollars a month. And that was the objective, fifteen, twenty dollars a month to do recycling. And if, we always, staff always, we just never got to a point where we RFP'd and looked at it. When we got to that point for recycling, we noticed that it is viable and costs effective. We go with the third party, privatizing it for local, for a local business, for a regional business to do it. So all we wanna do is take a look at it, and we'll get it back, and of course, we'll have a work session and see if it's viable, reduces the cost, and force.
That's a good idea. And I think recycling has, we, we're only six weeks into it, but has everything gone pretty well? And I think it's kind of pretty substantial, and I think we've definitely received no cost for comments, but I think.
You're in a lot of, a lot of them are rolling out the green trucks, right? Melissa, do you have anything to add?
I'm a hundred percent. We, we should always be revisiting things and not worshiping sacred cows, um, providing services. You know, regionalization, you know, is something we would be adopting when it makes sense. And this is just another reality check on what service we're getting, or what service we're providing and what it's costing our residents. So, uh, I'm glad that the committee brought our recommendation and supported.
So what, what we need is, and it's not official, actually, we don't need an official vote. But we need to know if you guys are willing to have staff look into it or propose it, if there are any of them.
Casey, please.
Here.
Casey, please, you've had a quick look at more.
And the RFP is saying should include also putting everything on the table, the other is taking over the, uh, capital, uh.
What we have out there right now.
Yeah, we have, it's a lot of, make a presence.
Uh, Mr. Collins, Mr. Scott, Street Committee redesigned Rhode Island Street between East Main Street and First Street.
Uh, this is a short, uh, update on issue that the street committee has looked at, uh, at least twice and maybe three times, but it's becoming very, it's very real now. This is actually right outside of Town Hall, keep yourself oriented, we're in the, in the, uh, Town Hall, going up the left-hand corner. Come out the building and, uh, you're gonna go up to Rhode Island Street. Then you'll see St. Thomas's Episcopal Church there on the left, and then, uh, Secondhand Consignment Shop. And what, what the street committee is proposing for council's adoption, or actually, we, we, we're recommending it. Were we gonna vote on this, or were we just gonna say this is what we're doing?
Uh, I think we're, we're at least gonna like, uh.
Yeah, okay, we'll bring it, if there's anyone that has objections to this, then we won't go ahead, but the street committee thinks this is a good idea. How's that for official language or something? Okay, so we have, uh, as you can see in this, in this area, we already, we have two through lanes there, uh, headed from the right to the left, which is heading, uh, west. And we've all been on that little section and we don't really need two lanes there. The Episcopal Church in the past has begged us for some, uh, strong street parking. And what we see is an opportunity here is to go ahead and re-strike that area, just make it, uh, one lane in each direction and provide nine more downtown parking spaces right there. Uh, go ahead and use your mouse there if you would, and sort of show us where the, yeah, those spaces there and those spaces there. It actually could probably make traffic flow safer as you come through the stoplight there in front of Hardee's. Go ahead and put your cursor, you're being there, you're headed towards Town Hall, is to just be one through lane there, uh, and that's ninety percent of traffic's in that lane anyway. So we're proposing to, uh, add some more parking spaces downtown and we can re-strike it in that area to, uh, provide some more downtown parking. Is there anything on leaving out, Mr. Collins and Mr. Winfield?
That's right, that's right. That's also.
Sure, that also is the situation with the second chance consignment, uh, their parking is a little short and you often see vehicles, they're killing your vehicle. Yeah, so this provides a little bit of, uh, protection from that.
And also too, this will help the cars, that's if, if the right-hand lane, they wanna be in the left-hand lane, that a side over, under people, they're blocking the road.
And I think, we do think it might help with some of the interstate traffic, when there's interstate act, I mean, it's not, you know, you may be more likely to use first street.
That was another consideration, uh, Mr. Winfield. And we're still preserving the right turn lane, not that we really need one from a traffic capacity standpoint, but we're still preserving a little tease of the right turn lane there on the, uh, East Main Street. Uh, so if traffic is turning right, can get out the way still, so. Uh, that's the street committee's recommendation, I guess we'll bring that to you, anyone stand opposed to that?
I, I had this one question, it's, I, I mean, it seems like traffic is building up so much more in this town. And we're basically taking a lane out, right? And so is that gonna, I mean, I guess you guys feel like, even with increased traffic, that even if you reduce the, the.
The traffic counts on this, we didn't look at that, the traffic counts on this particular section of Rhode Island Street between East Main and First Street is probably a third, I would guess. I would, and Mayor or RIN, Mr. Nelson, back there, but is probably a third of what's actually on that, on Rhode Island Street as you go, starting out of town.
It's probably close to right, maybe between a half to a third.
Third to a half, so, you're, you're correct, but we're also, I remind Councilman Hunter, we're also considering, uh, when we make the utility agreements along Rhode Island Street, that we may well turn Rhode Island Street into a one lane in this direction with a little left turn lane in there, so we can put some bicycle pedestrians on there. And I think the traffic on that road is about eleven thousand.
Yes.
From that neighborhood, and you take the left turn, that's a separate discussion. Your, your, your observation is apt, we are reducing, uh, by a lane, that particular section, but I, I would prefer that, from a traffic capacity standpoint, you won't really tell what happens.
So, you have, does it make you merge in over to the left?
Well, the, the yellow you see is gonna be, will strike that, uh, when you use your, laser beam and boom there. Where the yellow is, that, uh, that'll be clearly marked, and that's not a problem at all. We're still preserving the, the exclusive left turn lane on the First Street, that's the heavy rhythm. The through traffic is not that much, and we're just gonna direct that through traffic to come through the intersection and shift over the left lane, and the majority of traffic does that now. We, we all come through that intersection, we, or I'll speak for myself, I, I move through the intersection by staying in the right lane and avoiding those left turn movements. And when I get through the intersection, I'm almost always turn left, so then I get over to that lane anyway.
So you're gonna preserve the right turn lane up near the church?
Right. Yeah, directly, that, Jason, the church will still be the right turn lane, man. We just see it as a way to, there's some safety benefits, but it's also, uh, uh, we're using a parking right there.
But you need, was that building sold for the Consignment Shop, is it?
It, it's kind of signed up, I haven't noticed whether it's completed or not.
And we spoke to the owner earlier this week, and she was still looking for a, so, uh, Stalin is, is supportive of this, uh, of this design.
Oh, of course, yeah, and a lot more parking, somebody where. My concern is that where the yellow is, uh, where we have the merge, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I've been stuck between where the parking, uh, is, not where the yellow, 'cause that's almost right where the intersection is. I've been stuck trying to just merge over to the left if I'm going towards Town or coming to Town Hall. And my, my concern is if those parking spaces are full, how much of a bottleneck that's gonna cost in that intersection trying to get over? So I have been stuck here, I mean, that, this is in my wheelhouse, and anytime, you know, I live off Rhode Island Street, I, I travel Rhode Island Street quite a bit, but I know I'm usually stuck if, if there are more people going straight in the left lane and I can't get over. So I was wondering if there's any way maybe take, take a spot. I don't, I will support it no matter what, I'm just more concerned with, I do see a lot of people stuck where the, the parking, um, spaces are, are lined right there in my view.
What, what set would you lose a space on?
I think he's talking about the ones that are closer to Town Hall.
No, no, further, further away.
Like the stop lot, yeah.
Might you drive down there too?
There we go.
Yeah.
So are you doing, should we do something differently?
If you could take that, I mean, for me, we could drive like this, but that's usually where I get stuck, where that was, the, those last two or three.
You're saying lose some more space there?
It gives, allows, allows, allows more time, those people don't think it in like, say, and don't get in the left lane.
If this were done with voting, rather than striking?
Can we do it?
And then I'm, I'm hitting the Miller out of the game and coming down, uh, so.
How about, how about, or no, Mr. Epper had a good idea, why don't we, or if, if council's pleasure is, we could do this and see how it works, and then if it does work, we can, like, try, we can make permanent, and then we can adjust the curbing, you know, we can sort of put out there and see, uh, as Mr. Nelson likes to say, we can monitor the situation. And we'll see how, see how traffic is responding to that and then go a step further.
I like it.
I mean, we, with, the sooner we, we do these, the better off we are. I guess we're, we're thinking about, uh, for Brad, you still awake back there?
Yes, sir.
Is that gonna, no, that, that won't affect your Christmas parade at all because it filters down Park Street or, yeah, Main Street is. But it shouldn't, should that create a lot of hazard? You do put some stuff there.
Yeah, we do put some things there, but I don't think that it would cause a huge disruption.
Okay.
I think it would be okay.
Well, you're gonna block the parking off anyway, so basically it's still gonna have your, your two lanes, but. I don't, you know, I don't see a real issue in it, I do drive it every day, but I'm always in that far right lane because I know I'm coming to the court, to, to the Town Hall, so that's why I ride. So I, let's, let's give this a shot. I think we have, I have to put out some, and have a, a, a time that we're going to do this effective such and such. So we need to get the signs up, the pattern changes, whatever.
In order to make it work, the, the left-hand lane, after turn left, can you stretch?
It's what it's, oh, that's true, that's true, yeah. Left turn only lane, and that's what it's gonna be now, that's what the things drive from, so.
Yeah, so you get the left in there, the, you know, those few times I come in, I come in, now the turny line ends at the Town Hall, so it's.
I'm good, this doesn't get as, Cambria intersection's not very successful in making people turn left, but I think this one will.
Let's put a traffic circle in here somewhere.
It'll probably work.
All right, uh, is there a time, I mean, you wanna look at trying to do this November one, or?
We're gonna publicize it a little bit and push, look at, uh, this, our first schedule.
Probably, now you have the public input session, that's be a, that's be a good thing for the first, uh, copy with the mayor deal. Okay. All righty. Uh, any discussions, other discussions, or we're not taking any actions really on anything, we've given the head nods to go ahead and pursue the, the street, the, the, and the RFPs. I don't think we have anything else for action by us tonight, is what. I think we've been staffed.
Okay, can I bring up something, uh, it's probably a little out of order, talking about, uh, traffic, um, up there by the neck center. And it had the lights up there, likely with our, things going on, and maybe things have happened in council and it just flew by me. But I have had so many people, and I'm not sure if there's anybody here in the crowd, who, that area is, it's, uh, they're changing the light system, right? And, and it's supposed to be, be gonna get better, but I'm not sure if it is. I'm not sure, can we have a, a, maybe a, a session on that later on, or we had one and I just didn't catch it?
I've, I've had some complaints about the length of the light of the Cambria brain farm that's changed in the recent weeks, causing backups. And that's our largest neighborhood, that's an argument straight back.
We actually don't control that light, we got ours, but we, we're making it down, so we're starting to make about that.
The whole thing's gonna change in the next, over the next eighteen nights until finish, is that right?
It is.
We actually are arguing with the signal study we had this year too.
Could, could somebody reach out to them and then report back to us? Cause I have, uh, a lot of, uh, employees and officers live back in there, they, it's becoming real, a lot of problems.
I mean, somebody told me just yesterday that the traffic is backed up past the farmhouse in, in, in the morning. I mean, I'm not, you know, it's always been a problem, I know, but it seemed like, of course, we get, it doesn't seem like it has been better.
Okay, uh, thank you, Randy, uh, town manager?
Uh, I have a request, uh, for the, uh, the, the rest of the County Burn Building. Um, Blacksburg donated down the backhoe for use on their property, and we have a surplus dump truck that, uh, probably works that we brought to the, to the County Burn Building site. That's the, the council.
What is this site?
The County Burn Building on there on that road, it's basically a practice burn facility that the region uses, um, for fire ground. Uh, you know, they do have to do some site work there in prep and, I guess, for backwards. And because of that, they, they call some, we, uh, backhoe and also dump truck, like I said, Blacksburg, uh, it's all for the, the surplus backhoe. And we do have a surplus dump truck, if it's accepted with council, could be something they make that, for that use.
You all with you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do we use that, we're training?
This is one we were planning on surpassing here in a few months.
Right, but do we use the site?
We, we, we've received, the County received the Burn Building grant to build a, construct the, the Burn Building itself. Uh, it's gonna be a regional training facility for all the departments in the government county, and we've, uh, played a heavy part in trying to get where we at now, where we're at now. We're having a groundbreaking on Monday for the Burn Building facility, and hopefully by December, everything will be constructed and we'll be ready to do high fire training there. We hosted our cadet academy there, uh, a month ago when we hosted our cadet, our first ever cadet academy, so we'd be found using the facility a lot.
Now, what's the location again?
So we took the kids.
We took the kids down to the, to the facility, down to the training ground, and, uh, Blacksburg Fire Department Foundation has already constructed the steel shell building down there, that you have a maze unit set up in. Uh, I'd love to take council down there sometime, whether one-on-one or as a group, uh, and show you the facility and the plans for the facility. Uh, but like I said, we're having a groundbreaking on Monday to be able to go ahead and construct the Burn Building. Host construction out of Shaw's Hill, which the recipient have bid to build the building, and they're hoping that they'll have us in it by December, so. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a great facility, there's been a lot of legwork and a lot of work put into that facility to get it where we're at. Uh, Jim Lansonese and, and his crew volunteered time to go down and help us put a wireline in, that's been about two years ago. Uh, uh, so a lot of work, we've contributed a lot, Blacksburg Fire Department Foundation, Blacksburg secured a lot. The Denver County just approved the extra money that we were short on grant to be able to build the Burn Building to the tune of, I think, about a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars from Denver County fund. So.
Sounds, sounds to me like.
Can we get a motion, are you just, I'm sorry?
Maybe a motion on that?
We have a certification of town park, but are we people of the city Burnville, like in Montgomery County or?
It's a regional, we a regional.
It would be going, it would be going to the facility. And, and I guess we'd have to work out, you know, with, with the Blacksburg Fire Department Foundation, because the Denver County has signed into a lease agreement with them for twenty-five years for a dollar a year on a lease agreement to be able to use the facility, so we would have to determine who's gonna insure the truck and stuff to look like that. But, uh, the truck, if it's okay with council and okay with the town manager, we donate the truck, and that's the little things that we can work out. Uh, but basically the truck will stay on site unless we have to go get a load of rock or something to drive it.
Going forward, as long as we don't get behind on that rent, it sounds pretty high.
Yeah, but the dump truck, we're, we're about three and a half centuries, couldn't we?
Very good.
All right, so I, I mean, I.